Eddie, are we live? Debbie, you want to go ahead and call us the order? Here.
Yes, here.
Go ahead and do the pledge. Stan, you want to lead us in the pledge? Stan, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so thanks to everybody for being here. Before we do anything, I would like to regretfully acknowledge that we had a resident in the township pass away this week. George Carpenter, who was many things to the township. Helped with strategic planning and parks and countless hours, I'm sure, of volunteer work for the township. And I'd just like to have- So I'd just like to have a moment of silence for George if we could. Thank you. My thoughts or prayers with the family. Very unfortunate news. So, next order of business would be the approval of minutes.
I request a motion to approve the regular meeting of March 9th in a special meeting of the 8th of March.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, public presentation. We have Beth Lamrisch, is that correct? The Amelia Branch Manager, Amelia Library. Come on up. And make sure your mic's working there.
Hello.
Hi. Testing, testing. Go for it, Beth.
All right, yes, my name is Beth Lamrisch. I'm the manager of the Amelia Branch Library. And we did just celebrate National Library Week last week. But all year, staff is going out to our neighborhoods and letting them know that the library is here. We are fully open and we're highlighting some of the services that you may not be aware that we have. So just like everybody else, we're trying to build our customer base back and let people know where we are. So, the Amelia Library is located at 58 Maple Street. We are one block off of 125, just behind the CBS and the post office. We're right around the corner from St. Birdette Church and School. And not only do we offer materials for checkout, but we also provide a free notary service. We have, for a small fee, printing, scanning, and faxing. So in essence, we can be a one-stop shop for you for your forms. You can use one of our computers to print off your form, fill it out, have it notarized, scanner fax it to its destination, all right there in the library. With our printing, we have one of our computers that you can use. You can bring in your smartphone and print directly from there. You can even send us your print jobs from your home or office computer. Just use the Amelia Branch Library page to send your print job over. If all of a sudden you realize, darn it, I'm out of ink, send it over to us. And then stop by the library branch at your convenience and pick up your print job. It's pretty cool. We also have meeting rooms that you can reserve, and that structure has changed recently. So, meeting rooms can be booked by groups from the public two months in advance. And if it's for a nonprofit, a 501 nonprofit group, you can use them for free. Any other groups can use them for $20 a use. So we have those available. We also recently added library lockers to the front of our building. So that allows guests to request items for pickup, so you can have them sent to the locker, and then you can pick up your items whether the library is open or not. So it adds more hours for you. We also have downloadable audios, books, movies, and music for free. So you can forget about Audible, go to the library and get things for free to listen to, to watch. And if you're not sure how to get started with that, you can book a librarian for an hour, and you can come in with your device, and we'll show you how to get started with what app to download for free and get your library card set up and all that good stuff. So these are just a few of our more recent or recently revised services. If you'd like to learn more, please stop by and see us. We're now open on Monday mornings for the first time in over 10 years. So we're excited to have that as a new option. You'll see more services, this has been the bookmarks that I sent around. And in our activity newsletter, you can see our upcoming programs. In the month of April, we are working with the county to celebrate the bicentennial of President Grant's birthday. He was born in Claremont County. He reported pleasant on April 27th. So we've got a lot of programs, as does the birthplace, have programs coming up this month. For example, next Tuesday evening at 6 o'clock, you can come to the Amelia Branch and learn how to do silhouette portraits. So how they kind of got the likeness of their friends and loved ones before they could have a photograph. So, learn about that. Thank you so much for having me today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at any time.
Thanks, Beth.
Beth, could I ask you a question before you? Thanks for your presentation. I didn't know all this was available. This was great to know. Back in Kentucky, where I'm from, the library system down there offers little loaner Wi-Fi modules to take home. There's a word for that, I can't think of it, hotspot maybe. Do you all offer that by chance?
Yes, we do.
So residents can check those out and borrow them for a length of time? And is that free of SARD or is there a service fee for that?
It's free, yeah. Just get a library card and they have those available. They check out for a week at a time.
Okay. Unlimited data or?
I'm sorry.
Unlimited data?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You gonna cancel your service?
I might.
He's gonna ask if they do mailers next. You guys print mailers? That campaign material?
Thanks, Beth.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Beth. All right. Departmental celebrations and updates.
Chief Rocksmith. Yes, so tonight, we are fortunate to have one of our finest here with us today. Police Township Officer Justin Schultz is with us. Justin, can you stand up, please? So, you may notice that Justin Schultz does not meet our grooming requirements. That's because he's assigned to the Claremont County Narcotics Unit. And that unit investigates drug complaints throughout Claremont County. So Justin is a very integral part of that unit. He's one of the best that they have in that unit. And on March 28th, you'll see a picture here that we provided. The Claremont County Narcotics Unit conducted a narcotics investigation on a known target. Narcotics agents performed surveillance on the subject, which led to a traffic stop inside Union Township, Claremont County. With the assistance of the Union Township Police Department, approximately 3.5 pounds of marijuana and 100 THC vape cartridges were located. The traffic stop seizure was estimated at approximately $6,500. But the investigation did not end there. Following the seizure from the stop, agents executed a search warrant, which led to a large confiscation of THC products. Total from the traffic stop and search warrant, $41,000 in US currency, 11 pounds of THC wax, 25.6 pounds of marijuana, 3,600 THC vape cartridges, 96 edibles, and one pistol. And total street value was $300,000. So Officer Schultz played a large part of that investigation. You know, they're part of a team, but Officer Schultz was the principal agent in this investigation. And we are very happy to have him as part of our department, and he's worthy of this recognition. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Officer Schultz. I didn't recognize you, which I guess is the point.
If you did, that would be a problem.
Okay. Chief Wright?
How do I follow up for that? So the only thing I can offer is our UTV that was approved by the board several months ago. We got a call a week, two weeks ago, that it's in about a month and a half early. So they're working on putting on the bumpers and some of the associated equipment, so hopefully we'll have that in the next few weeks, instead of sometime in May like we anticipated. Just a reminder, Pond Run's closed on the lower end. It's not anticipated open until May 6th. And Assistant Chief Watkins and Deputy Chief Masterson both started. Mike started a little bit earlier than Jim, but they're both on board now. We're working on getting them kind of acquainted with the township and how things work. Very happy to have them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. All right, Service Director Kohler.
We've been able to keep up with a lot of the ditching complaints that we've had throughout the township. It's typical that we get a lot of complaints, and we're just trying to keep up with those. And, and then, I was gonna talk about Pond Run, but-
He stole your thunder.
In case anybody doesn't know, they are, Claremont County is replacing a bridge deck on that road. And it will eliminate the- The bridge weight will go up, so it won't be restricted quite as bad. So, I think they said it won't have any weight restrictions on it. So, we'll only have a weight restriction at 7:49.
Will it be, are they removing the timbers?
Yeah, they're actually putting a precast-
That's what I wondered about that.
-in there, so. Be a nice bridge.
Good. All right, thanks, John. Parks and Green Space. Michelle, are you the only person here from Parks and Green Space? Is your name on the committee? I didn't want to put you on the spot, I just wanted to see if you had anything to add. Okay.
A lot of UC students. A lot of the students were from UC, I believe. New Year, Dan New Year made arrangements.
Great. All right, planning and zoning, Eddie.
I did have something else to add related to that, was just to be mindful that we need to schedule a joint meeting with the Parks Committee and clarify before the end of our agenda, just when that will work best for everyone. The regular meeting is May the 4th, but I know we have to do a lot of rescheduling in order to work some dates and for a public hearing and other business.
Okay, let's bookmark the scheduling till the end. Hammer all that out. Eddie, zoning.
So we had our third Landes Committee meeting last night, went very well. We made some pretty significant progress. Last night was kind of the first night where we did a lot of existing conditions and started, really started to get into a lot of the more fun stuff, so to speak, more creative ideas and things like that, which can really, really starting to dig in in that way. Last month, we had-
Last month, we had seven new dwelling permits. So that's actually, it's 21 on the year now. So again, we kind of thought maybe there might be a slowdown a little bit, but it's been kind of staying pretty steady. We also were continuing interviews for Planning and Zoning Assistant Position. So we're going to be finishing up later this week. So hopefully we'll have some more clarity on that sooner than later. And as Administrator Roki alluded to, there's going to be a need for another meeting. So the zoning commission at their last public hearing recommended approval of a zone map amendment. So that zone map amendment will have to come before this board within 30 days after that decision having been rendered. And based off of just some general discussions, we felt that it would make the most sense to hold that public hearing at the currently scheduled May 11th meeting. In all likelihood, that would probably necessitate us scheduling a new May meeting. So that would be a discussion I would definitely like to have to see how everyone's schedule could, if everyone's schedule could work out to.
All right, so what do we have? Is there any other scheduling stuff we have? We have the Joint Parks Meeting and then this. Is there anything else?
Well, the public hearing takes for May 11th, regular agenda.
I understand that part. Is there anything else? Okay, so let's just go ahead and take care of it if possible. So we'll start with the May 11th, I guess. So we have the, it's my understanding that the 11th meeting, the trustees meeting, it would be more apropos to go ahead and do the zoning meeting in that slot, correct? So everybody's already good for the trustees meeting, I assume.
Well, yes. For what time would we like to do the public hearing? Still 6:30?
I guess we could decide.
Yeah, that's the existing time slot. You'll still have, you could still conceivably have other business that, you know, but theoretically, the one main item would be that public hearing. And since we were already kind of bookmarked to 6:30, just that's when the regular would occur.
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think that's fine. That gives me, we've set a meeting with the family on Pond Run with me that evening. But that's at 5:30?
That's right.
Okay, so 6:30 would be fine.
Okay, so then we got to figure out a spot for our trustees meeting, right? So we could do, you know, the next day, the Thursday or anytime thereafter. I'm pretty flexible. We do have the police banquet on the 18th, the following Wednesday. We want to avoid.
The 12th would not work for me.
But the 19th, would that work for everybody? Thursday, the 19th?
It's open for me.
Yeah, go with it. Okay, the 19th at 6:30 or 5:30?
Well, we'll do, since it's a normal trustee, we'll do it at the same time. So we just want to make sure that we get that notice out. I would say via circle and via all our email lists and everything, let everybody know that what they, what they would normally expect, when they would normally expect the trustees meeting to be, it will not. It'll be the following Thursday. So just make sure we get that message out. We don't have folks showing up for the trustee meeting and being disappointed that they have to sit through a zoning hearing. Right?
The only disadvantage is that Eddie won't be available on the 19th, but I think we can work our way through it.
Okay. And then the Joint Parks Meeting? So do we have dates preferable or available or what timeframe are we looking at there?
I don't know if it's at all possible that you could do that on the same date, the 19th, depending on how big your agenda is for regular business. I don't know what to anticipate yet.
That sounds like a good idea.
What's the subject matter at hand for the Joint Parks Meeting?
Basically to go for the park master plan improvements that are already identified. Clubbers will come to go over the scope of work with us and we can just refine it together and match a budget to it. What I've discovered is that I think that we've appropriated some of the money. We've identified the sources of money, but we haven't put the whole package together. And the engineer should be bringing us their best cost estimate as well, but costs are going up.
Okay, so it sounds like five would be enough time. If we have it at five, that would probably give us enough time.
So if we would, if we would meet earlier, I think that that could accommodate both.
Okay.
Well, then we could, then we could stick to a regular agenda at 6:30. It would allow us an hour and a half to discuss park business and then we can roll right into the 6:30 meeting as scheduled.
Sounds good to me.
I'm in agreement.
Correct. So to recap, we have the zoning meeting taking place of a regular trustees meeting on May 11th at 6:30. Then we have a regular trustees meeting moved to May 19th at 6:30. And the Joint Parks Meeting on May 19th at 5:00.
So I would just ask clarity from the Law Director, whether that would be just a special trustee meeting? No, it's a regular trustee meeting, but with the Parks Joint Meeting held as a special meeting prior to the regular meeting? So a 5 o'clock special meeting notice and rescheduling the regular meeting to the 19th at 6:30.
Yeah, I would do it that way. Just make sure that your notices are clear with respect to the different agendas and what's going to be proposed at each meeting.
And I'll advise the court. Does that work for fiscal officer?
All right, sounds good. And again, I would like a little extra effort made to make sure, you know, we push out on Circle and a few other places to let people know that that regular trustees meeting has been moved. All right, Loretta, you might as well jump in. You got anything else?
I do. I did want to make note, and this has been sent out on Circle, that our natural gas supplier is no longer supplying. They are no longer under contract with us. So Duke Energy is sending letters, direct mail, and emails to customers, letting them know that they'll be returning to Duke Energy from Volunteer Energy. And when rates are favorable, our broker will suggest another program for us to go back into. The other matter is that I have my job announcement prepared and I want to just discuss the timeline with you. If I put this out by April the 18th, I have the main sources, day advertisers, the Township Association, the Ohio City County Management Association, the Center for Local Government is some of the primary places that people look for this type of position. We would also put it on our website. And if we did that, I was looking at either having people reply in about three weeks or so, either Monday, May 2nd, or Friday, May the 6th, whatever you thought the preference would be in terms of having that out.
So you're putting the deadline when again, I couldn't quite.
Okay, I believe that by the time I get it to these agencies to post, I could get it out by the 18th of April. And then we could take replies back through either Monday, May 2nd, or give it till Friday, May the 6th.
I'd give it till the Friday.
A little bit later Friday.
So that's what I'll do and I'll send all of you a copy of the posting when it's sent.
Do we need a motion to approve the posting of that position? I think we typically have, haven't we made a motion?
To advertise. You will to a point, but not to advertise.
I figured we probably would do a point. I figured that might be something we'd have to make a motion on. But I could have swore we did motions to advertise, but maybe not.
Yeah, if you'd like.
Let's just do one. Do I have a motion to go ahead and advertise the position of Township Administrator for Pierce Township? Starting, what is that, May the?
April the?
April the?
Around the 18th. It's just a matter of when I send it to these agencies, how fast.
Somewhere around the 18th. So I have a motion.
Motion?
Seconded.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 And the only other really important piece of business is the Easter egg hunt is going to happen. It should be good weather on Saturday. And if anyone is available to volunteer, we want to let Donna Can know that and thank her profusely for getting everything prepared for this. So again, the the hunt is for children ages 10 and under and the Easter Bunny arrives at 10 AM and you'll have a photo opportunity.
Okay, are we good on volunteers for laying out eggs in the morning? Do you know? She needs more. So we should probably mention that if anybody is listening in or here at the meeting and you want to volunteer to set the eggs out in the fields on Saturday morning. I think it starts at 9 AM, right?
No, well, the volunteers come earlier, but the children start with the Easter Bunny at 10.
Yeah, I was mentioning the volunteer.
Yeah, but the volunteers will need to be there.
I was asking if we had any volunteers that want to show up at 9 AM, was it? Okay, so if anybody wants to volunteer, let us know. You can call in here or Loretta's email is on the website and I think the volunteers would start at 9. And then the other festivities, the Easter Bunny at 10 and the actual hunt at 11, correct? So we could use a few more volunteers to lay eggs out if anybody's so inclined. 7,000? Kids are gonna have a blast. Some carpal tunnel there after that.
I did have the motion that I was going to ask for about the Ohio River Way. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, when you'd like to put that on the agenda. It's going to probably be, my motion will be pointed toward, you know, the administrator. So therefore, administration seems like a fine time to do it, right?
Sure.
So the other night, I received a call from the Ohio River Way, which is a program that, it's an organization that focuses on advocacy for the Ohio River towns, villages, and townships. And they are going after funding. It's another goodwill gesture. They're going after funding in the federal budget for a program that will provide technical assistance to local governments with regard to economic development, travel, tourism, a whole host of other services if they're successful in getting, getting the funding. So that said, they asked if we would do a letter of support for the, for the grant request. So I see nothing wrong with it. We're not paying for anything. It's just a grant. New Richmond has already agreed to do it. Portsmouth is doing it. I'm trying to think of the other river towns that have already, that have already signed on. So this would just be a letter of support and nothing more.
Similar to what we did for the New Richmond Project?
Yes. So having said that, I would like to make a motion that we direct, and Loretta, I'll help you with this, so.
Send me some details.
Yeah, that we direct the administrator to draft a letter of support for the Ohio River Way funding request.
Second motion.
Roll call Debbie.
Yes.
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 Thank you guys.
Sure. All right, Loretta, do you have anything else under administration?
I do not at this point.
All right, old business. We have any old business? I think we should three-tier this and make ancient business, old business and new business. All right, new business, Debbie. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion?
Motion?
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
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 You still didn't let Brockstrom in on, did you?
No.
We're picking on you over here. Don't worry.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
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 You got a lot.
You've been busy, man.
How exciting. So moved.
It'll cost more than that to keep it on the road. I mean, that thing is a wreck.
Yeah, I'll state for the record, I think he's getting a horrible deal.
I don't even think that Officer Sandy would go in that car. Wow, of course, that fast.
She's a cat, right?
Did you already make the motion, Pete?
Yes, I did.
Motion? Seconded.
Yes.
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 Oh, good.
Okay, you're nice to have some help, huh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion?
A motion?
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Chief Brockstrom.
I request a motion for Resolution 2022-010, authorizing expenditure from American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of $3,160. This is to IMI Ohio LLC for the concrete apron for the police storage facility out back. And this is for concrete only.
Motion?
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief Brockstrom.
I request a motion to purchase a new 2022 Ford Explorer from Lebanon Ford in the amount of $40,587. We are ordering it now because it could take as much as 30 weeks to get the vehicle in.
30 weeks? That is a heck of a deal on a Ford Explorer, isn't it? 40,000?
It's about the base price there and then we're, the next motion will be to outfit that vehicle.
Oh, okay. I have a motion.
Motion?
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief Brockstrom.
I request a motion to allocate an additional expense to outfit the 2022 Ford Explorer with police equipment from par public safety upon delivery. This expense is not expected to exceed $10,000. And this would be for such things as the lights, the plastic molding in the rear of the vehicle, the push bumpers and so forth, the emergency equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Brockstrom.
I request a motion to allow retiring Police Chief Jeff Bachman to purchase his department issued firearm for $1. As outlined in the police union contract, Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;P 9mm, serial number Nora Bosson Boston 2020.
So in my head, I'm imagining him cruising the streets of Williamsburg with this gun and drinking beer, going, you know, getting donuts and just having a great time.
He'll be a responsible gun owner.
I'm sure he will. Absolutely. I'm sure of it, but in his old Crown van.
With Officer Sandy's shotgun, right?
So moved. Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, Chief Brockman.
I request a motion to pay Axon Enterprise Incorporated in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. For body camera equipment warranties and licenses for year one of a five-year contract. Once this amount is paid, we will be reimbursed eleven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Through a justice assistance grant, also known as a JAG grant. This makes the cost to the township in year one, three thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents.
What, just out of curiosity, what's year two and thereafter?
Year two. I had that information. We will look to for more grants in years two through five. I think it's a five-year grant.
So this is not for like tangible equipment? Moreover, it's for the the service and?
No, it's for tangible equipment as well.
Oh, okay.
So we look to have body cams put in operation in mid to late May. And it's a important evolution of our department because naturally it's gonna reinforce that transparency we have with the community. And assure them that we are doing the right thing out there. But I can get you that.
I was just I was just curious. It's not I did that. You're gonna have a license fee that goes on from there.
So Chief, that's an eleven thousand dollar grant for one time?
Yes.
One-time grant?
That's correct.
Okay.
But there 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 probably will be additional grants out there. So it is our hope that the cost to the township will be nominal for the remaining years.
And what is the JAG? Is that a state grant or federal or?
That's a federal grant.
Federal, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief Brockman.
I request a motion to purchase eighteen Level Three A ballistic helmets from Protec Sales for the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars. The helmets would be used in potential active shooter incidents. We had a situation where we purchased helmets some time ago. And we received information from the Attorney General, the U.S. Attorney General's Office, that these helmets didn't meet the Level Three A. Rating that they were supposed to be rated for. So the vendor is the vendor has sold a number of these helmets to departments throughout the nation. And the Attorney General's Office is involved in litigation with them. So it's hope that we will get restitution for the helmets that we now have.
And these helmets that we have currently, they're so considered substandard essentially?
Well, they will stop certain rounds, but not the rounds that, you know, were they were intended to stop the rifle rounds.
In this kind of a scenario where we have surplus equipment like this, we've done this with the fire department. We donated that kind of equipment to, I can't remember the name of the entity, but oversee something or another. Their opportunity, would would this be something where we could conceivably rather than pitching them?
So we have the same helmets. We're in the same situation.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Well, and my my suspicion is is that as the litigation transpires, they're gonna take those and they're gonna destroy them. Because they're not meeting the the goals that they're supposed to meet.
Right.
So they'll love destroy them.
Yeah, but until we get those new helmets, we will continue to carry our current helmets.
Yeah, you can't use something for a purpose in which you think it was intended and then it's not. I mean, that's a porn. I hope to get get what's coming to them as far as marketing knows in a seatful way, it sounds like.
Right.
It's awful.
I make a motion to approve.
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief Brockman.
My final motion is to request a motion to purchase fifteen thousand rounds of Winchester ammunition. From Vance's Law Enforcement in the amount of three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. The ammunition is needed for yearly firearms qualifications and training. We are transitioning to new firearms this year. As such, our officers will need to put a a lot of rounds through those firearms because they have. Red dot optics. I have my rangemaster here as well. So if you have any questions regarding the particulars of this, he can answer probably better better than I can, but. You know, we we have a low supply of ammunition right now. And ammunition that we ordered last year has not come in yet. So there is a shortage. So we need to restock our supply. And it's not to say that we're anticipating any problems here in Claremont County, but.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 All right, Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Andrew Petrodeo from part-time firefighter paramedic to full-time firefighter paramedic. At the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement effective April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Andrew was was a part-time member with us. We hired him full-time. He left us in December. He took another opportunity up north for some personal reasons. And has decided that he wants to come back. He stayed he stayed part-time, but decided he wants to come back full-time. And we have a vacancy currently, so seems like a logical move for us.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Sims as a part-time firefighter paramedic at the established rate. And successful completion of all associated pre-employment requirements in a one-year probationary period, noting the cost of all associated pre-employment requirements is that of the township.
So moved. Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to approve the appointment of Tim Linds as a part-time firefighter EMT at the established rate. Pending successful completion of all associated pre-employment requirements in a one-year probationary period, noting the cost of all associated pre-employment requirements is that of the township.
So moved second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I request a motion to approve the emergency purchase of parts for the two thousand and two Precision Fire Engine from Precision Fire Apparatus. In the amount of three thousand one hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved. Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And my last one, I request a motion to approve the purchase of globe turnout gear and personal protective equipment from Vogelpool Fire Equipment. In the amount of six thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Sir Kelly. I have one additional thing on on the remaining cost for that four years. It's nine thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars per year. But again, we look to apply for grants to pay for that.
Thank you, Chief. John.
I request a motion for resolu- or request a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven. Authorizing one hundred and eighteen thousand thirty-seven dollars and forty cents expenditure from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. For additional cost of the twenty twenty-two resurfacing program through the county engineer's office. The paving bids came back way higher than what was anticipated.
I wonder why. Could you explain that?
Maybe because of fuel costs and oil costs, though.
And what is what is blacktop made out of?
Dominantly petroleum.
Yeah.
So same scope of work, just an increased price for the same scope of work.
Yep.
Make the motion.
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero twelve. Authorizing expenditure from American Rescue Act Plan Act Funds to accept the quote of eighty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. For storm sewer rehabilitation on Holly Ridge from Insight Pipe Contracting. If you remember, we I worked with them last year on it. We tried to go for a grant. We were denied that grant. And so we it's something that needs to be done. It's these pipes are really deep in the ground. They're about thirty foot down. And the road is a dead end road, so there's no other access to get out. So if we have to, if we dig the pipes up, people won't be able to get to their homes. So it's our in our best interest before we lose the pipes too far that they can't be lined. This is probably our best option.
What's involved? What's the what are they? What are they gonna do?
Basically, you should it's a resin tube that they send in through the pipe. They will send in a bladder with that. They'll blow that bladder up and it will harden and basically you get like a PVC pipe on the inside of that pipe.
Okay.
That's about a quarter inch thick and it's rated really high for strength. They do it a lot in sewer lines for those, so they can also do culvert pipes.
Did we get more than one bid on this?
We did not. They were all it. There's not a lot of people to do it. And they were, it was just hard to get one person here, much less to get multiple bids. So I can I can get more bids.
I was just wondering, because it morphed from a potential grant into not a grant, and I just was curious on that.
I mean, I I can search for other ones and see if I can get them here and then within the next month. And then we can see if we can have another bid to compare to it.
Is there any pending pipe failure or?
No, no, we have, the pipe is in stable shape right now, but within the next five years, it will not be liable.
I think that's a good idea.
You'll have time to go get other bids after I do what I'm gonna do to the to the motion. Because I'd like to make a friendly amendment to it that we make this contingent upon the review of legal counsel. To make sure that it's ARPA eligible.
Okay.
So that's that'll give that'll give you a couple of days anyway. I'd like to have a document that backs that up that we put in the file because I don't want to have a situation where we think something is ARPA eligible, it's not, and it gets clawed back.
Okay.
Because then it goes from a grant opportunity to an ARPA opportunity to we're paying something back we didn't expect to pay back.
See, these things, these, each company is going to want a camera, the pipe.
Yeah.
So that they see what is going on. And to have this company camera it, it was four thousand dollars that we approved last year. So it was kind of a.
But if we've cambered it for them and we gave them four thousand dollars, do we own the camera work?
I have a flash drive. I'll see if it'll work for them.
Because then we could just share the already done product and save ourselves the four thousand dollars.
Yeah, if if they'll accept that, I'm not sure. Some of them might say, no, we need, we want to look at it for ourselves.
Then you might want to come out and take a look, but we've got.
Yeah.
So is that four thousand dollars to be perhaps, or maybe this was discussed, maybe not credited towards the total amount of the any ultimate contract? No, okay.
Well, that's all the more reason to leverage it to get another, if that's possible.
Yeah, we can do that.
We're gonna have time now because of the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
We can pass the motion with the qualification that it that we have to share it with the law director.
Well, we may be getting other bids.
I I say we just wait until the next month.
Okay, that's fine with me, but I would.
Because I'm not gonna get anybody here within the next week.
Yeah, but.
Because they're all gonna be coming.
I think that it would be a good idea to do this concurrently so that we can have the wheels in motion to know whether this is even an ARPA eligible project. So I'd kind of like to go ahead and have the motion so that we can get the law director in motion doing this stuff.
I mean, we can do the review without passing the motion.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you can table it now and we can take a look.
Okay, as long as we can do that, but I'd like to have that process going concurrent because I don't I don't really want to waste a lot of time once we get to it. If it's ARPA eligible, then we just bring it up to the next meeting and away we go.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds fine to me.
All right, John, you're still up?
I request a motion to accept the quote of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents. For a T seventy-six, T four Bobcat compact track loader from Bobcat Enterprises. And that is state bid price.
Motion.
Motion seconded.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. John.
Service Department Director John Cole requests a motion to authorize an agreement with W E. Smith Construction in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents. For the coal road erosion mitigation project and is OPWC grant and loan.
Could you maybe give us a breakdown of that, the loan versus grant?
I can do that.
Okay.
So the total budget that we had for this was three hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars. We had a loan approved up to ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Local share equal to that and the grant in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So in fact, because we're coming in below that, we have we have additional room for contingency and the opportunity to take less loan money. Than was required and put in a little less local match than was originally required. So this is a very, very good bid.
And this was the low bid from as assessed by Klangers, is that right?
Yeah. And they with this bid came in quite a bit lower than all the rest of them. They did some checking with other entities that have worked with them. And they also talked with them and asked them why their bid was so low. They said this is like their specialty in their niche and so they can, they're pretty. They can just roll them out really fast, so that's why their bids are so low.
All right.
Okay, I make the motion.
Seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Mr. McCarthy.
Planning and zoning administrator Eddie McCarthy requests a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two oh one three. Regarding debris and conditions at nine sixty-two legendary run.
So well, we're gonna need some discussion on this.
Cool. I'll give a little background on it. So there was a structure fire at this location in September of two thousand twenty-one. The property has been monitored to over that period of time by the building department, fire department, planning and zoning. It has also changed ownership, so there have been three different owners in that period of time. However, within the past couple of weeks, the circumstances on site have begun to deteriorate. So staff in monitoring the circumstance is recommending that we consider that you consider this nuisance process for the structure. So in the event that they fail to rectify the situation or properly take care of it. We would have the ability to proceed and take care of it on our own.
But we were, do we have some photographs? Or was this gonna be something we would do later or as a part of your discussion or?
I so, well, we actually do have some very recent photographs from Mr. Port from Mr. Johnson, which I can bring those up right now if you'd like.
Please. Come on up, Rex.
Well, he's bringing the pictures up. I'll just for the right, oh, there we go. For the record, Rex Johnson, I live at seven forty Stonehill Run and I'm currently serving as president of the legendary run HOA Board of Trustees. Thank you, guys. I had some prepared comments, but I think Eddie is is pretty much his. Thank you, guys. I had some prepared comments, but I think Eddie is is pretty much hit on a lot of these things. But just, I thought it was important to get some of this stuff on the public record. As you know, this house caught fire sometime around Labor Day of last year. And if after months of delay, as apparently the owners of the house were struggling to get settlement from their insurance company, it sat there, it sat there, it sat there. And then finally, they they sold it. And as as he mentioned, it may have changed hands a couple of times. And most recently, as you can see during that high wind that we had a couple of weeks ago, a wall collapsed. And these pictures were taken yesterday. Um, you can see there were some workers out there cleaning up the debris that had been laying in the yard there for the last couple of weeks from that collapsed wall. And as I understand it, the uh, the county building inspector had been out and required them to put up a support on the remainder of that wall. And you can see that there in the in the picture. Obviously, it it's still an absolute mess. Um, and the neighbors, particularly those in the immediate area, have understandably expressed serious concerns about safety, among other things. Recently, as you know, the 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 wall collapsed. And as it sits today, you can you can see now a little bit of progress was made yesterday. I did not go by there today. So I don't know if they've cleared up anymore. But if you can see, I mean, that dumpster is already full. And there's a whole nother pile of debris laying on it still on the ground and then big sections of the house that have yet to come down. I think, you know, one of the biggest concerns for the local neighbors is they've had to look at this, they've had to smell it. I think we can all agree that there isn't anything that smells a whole lot worse than a house fire. And the the property's not secure. I mean, all they've got is some yellow caution tape strung around there. Little kids can get in there or teenagers or who knows what. I mean, so I would just, first of all, I want to thank you as trustees and and the rest of the group here for the involvement. And you guys have already, you know, intervened as best you can. We, as a homeowners association, we just don't have a lot of power. You know, we've we've got some authority when it comes to building this thing back um, as far as what the design and so forth goes. But to push this process along, we've been kind of handcuffed. And so I appreciate, you know, anything you guys have, the things you've done already. If it helps speed things along to have this declared as a nuisance and gives you more power, then we're all for it. If that if that slows the process down or creates more red tape uh, and more, you know, and I don't understand the process, but all we really care about is the property gets secured so that it's safe and that it gets torn down and and rebuilt as quickly as possible. So as they say in the United States Senate, with that, I yield back.
Actually, they filibuster in the Senate. So you you brought a phone book, we'd be in trouble.
Thanks, Rex. Eddie, if you don't mind my asking a question on that, Rex brought up a really good point. If we were to declare this a nuisance, would that create additional red tape or hassle for the new developer or anyone else?
Eddie, can we, I'd like to hear what the legal opinion is on.
So we're operating under a statute, it's five oh five eight six from the Ohio revise code. And what we have, what Eddie has put together with respect to the resolution and the specific passage of is we're declaring it unsecure and unsafe, which we have an opinion from the fire team declaring that. So we will then have, once we pass this resolution, we'll have to send certified notice to the homeowner saying, you know, we've declared your property unsafe and insecure, and we're gonna take steps to rectify this problem. You don't intervene and take steps to rectify this problem. They have thirty days from the date that we do that to get back in touch and, you know, either request a hearing or have a, you know, they can request a formal hearing, we can talk about all that. I don't think it's gonna slow anything down because it, you know, it could prompt the homeowner to act more, you know, in a more expedient fashion. But they do have a time period in which to respond and object or or propose alternatives. And, you know, we have to, they, as a homeowner, have constitutional rights. We can't simply, you know, go onto their property and do what we want. So we're gonna have to, you know, yield in certain aspects if they have a solution that, you know, is reasonable. But no, I don't think it will significantly slow it down.
But having said that, does that give us any additional tools in our in our toolbox that we don't currently have to move forward?
Certainly. So when you, when it's, when it's declared under five oh five eight six unsafe and insecure, you have, the trustees have the power to send someone onto the property to secure it and to remove it, destroy it. I mean, there are options under the statute, once it, once this resolution is passed, that you can you can take. Um, you know, provided no hearing is requested and all of that.
But that curve, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Would that be within the thirty day period or we have to wait until after that thirty days?
We have to wait to the expiration of the thirty day period. Once the certified mail notice is sent to the homeowner.
But in theory, someone would come back and say, if the homeowner could come back and say, well, we've got these things in place. This is how we're gonna address this. In that thirty day period, we could just push this back a little further, if that's necessary.
I mean, you can start this process over again, you know, if they come back and say, listen, this is what we're doing. You could table this for the time. And then if it doesn't move forward, you know, you can pass on the resolutions, send another notice and start it, you know, over. This is kind of apply some pressure.
But as it stands right now, I mean, I know Rex mentioned that actually, I should do this like the Senate. Mr. Johnson stated, the honorable member from Legendary Run. He mentioned that um they were very powerless at the HOA. Quite frankly, I think we're relatively powerless as a township. Right now, where does that authority rest to do these to do these things to get this project moving forward?
It's the revised code.
Understood. But but who does the revised code identify as kind of the leader, you know, the agency?
After we pass the resolution.
But prior to that, who has that authority? County Building Department?
Yeah, I mean, prior to that, it's the county. I mean, you guys don't have any authority to do that unless the building is unsafe and insecure as provided in the statute.
So the only way for us to get that, in other in other words, in order to get the the horse in front of the cart, a horse being us, I didn't want to use mule because I think that would make us much more unattractive. But the only way we can get that accomplished is to do this motion.
Correct. So with the fire chief's, you know, declaration.
So the building is clearly unsafe and unsecure. And I think everybody can see that. I don't, I mean, this is a horrible circumstance. I've been through this in two thousand seventeen. I lasted home due to fire and immediately tore it down because it was in fact dangerous to the neighboring families and kids and pets and so forth. So I would be in support of the proposed motion. Uh, I'm hopeful that within that thirty day period, the owner will just take responsibility for an obviously unsafe situation and do the right thing. And is the owner a developer or someone who intends to rebuild for their own purposes? Do we know?
It are, my understanding is that they're looking to renovate and then resell.
Oh, resell. Okay. Well, so so they're not gonna be a neighbor. In other words, it's they're gonna sell it. Okay. All right. Well, I I'm in support. I this is not only nicer, but I agree with Rex. I think it's dangerous to not only the families around them, but also to animals, any any pets that were going there, cats and dogs in the neighborhood. You know, God forbid, they were injured as well. So I would be in support of this motion. And I'll make the motion if we're ready to do that.
Well, yeah, let me let me clarify a couple of things from my own ignorant interpretation, I'm sure of what this is. So we're creating a backstop here that's thirty days out. And the condition in which we expect the property to be in in thirty days is still up in the air. Is that correct? Or how is the resolution or the written at this point?
So really, at a at a base level, we recognize the structure right now as deficient in in some form. And then there are a number of different ORC requirements as far as being insecure, unsafe and those sorts of things. So right now, the determination would be that that is how the the structure in its current uh iteration stands. The way the resolution is written, though, as Attorney Barbier had mentioned, thirty days, it does act as a backstop. That's a good way of putting it. So the way that normally works is we would look at this conceivably as if it were under construction or in progress. To date, they are working with the building department to phase, to do a phase demolition, stabilization, debris clearance and so forth. So that's the that's the understanding that staff is working under, is that there is a a schedule of progress to be expected. Now, in the event that that's that that schedule is deep, there are significant deviations, some significant factor changes in the determination of the building department or chief right. If something significant changes, there are, you know, this matter would have to be readdressed within that thirty days. But as it stands right now, it it does appear that they've followed the instructions that they've been given by the building department and obtaining an engineer's letter and so on and so forth. But you never, it's 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 an ever changing situation. We had no expectation that there was going to be a windstorm or whatever might unforeseen event could occur.
Oh, thank you, I guess. So at thirty days, where do we expect this thing? We we don't know. That's still subjective. It's based on the county engineer and.
According to this, according to this legislation, we would be nowhere, unless if if the landowner did nothing, we'd be no different than we are right now. It appears that they're moving on the site and they're cleaning, they're doing the things they're supposed to do. But after that thirty day period, as I understand it, they have the ability to request a a hearing before this board, very much like what On the Green did when we considered this, around the green. So if they're a bad customer, they'll do nothing, we'll be right where we are in thirty days. In which case, we will have to make a decision, a determination whether we want to move on to the site. But this will give us the tools to, at that thirty day period, move on to the site and take action.
I I do understand all that, but let's just say they move one board out of that thing. And thirty days comes and they come back and they're not where they are. Then we have the ability to give them notice that we're gonna come on the site and we're gonna take care of the situation and bill them for it. Am I, is that accurate?
We're doing that now.
But but at thirty days is when we can actually come on the site, if if it's not to our satisfaction. So my whole point is, I'm just trying to pin down the subjective nature of what's sufficient and what's not at thirty days. Or we come back and we talk about it and we just decide as a board, this meets our expectations or it doesn't.
The standard, though, is determined by the fire chief. So the standard of unsafe, insecure, that would empower you to go onto the property is determined by the chief. And that's what is empowering the resolution, his letter. So if the chief, you know, makes the decision that this property is shored up or secure, you know, that would not empower you to go on to the property. That would be the difference.
Okay, I got you. Okay, thank you.
So for example, the night of the fire, we had a board of company come out and completely secure the structure. So you don't have to secure the property, but the structure itself to prevent any unwanted access. The property was completely secured. It has been completely secured up until last week. So the new owners, as they went in and started working inside the structure, removed some of the plywood coverings that secured the structure and didn't secure them back. So I mean, that's one piece. Unfortunately, that's an easy remedy for them. You know, my biggest concern is that the east wall that's partially collapsed and the other half of the wall that's was was buckled. And that's why in consultation with the building department, it was ordered for them to shore that just to prevent any impact or danger to the neighboring property. In addition to that, they were doing some renovation and demolition work inside and no permits were even had been had been submitted. So there was a stop work order issued by the building department just to make sure that they were submitting the plans and the and getting the proper permits. And so it's a little bit of a cat and mouse game. And so as as Mr. McCarthy pointed out, we've been watching since September. But the windstorm drastically changed it for me last week. So we'll continue to monitor and see how things go.
Rex, can you come up real quick? Sorry, just so if anybody's watching on this.
I just have one question, and that is, if you do have the property declared a nuisance, does that give you the you the authority to demand that the that the structure be completely demolished? Or are your your hands still tied if they say, no, we only want to tear down part of it, we want to build back, you know, we want to keep part of it? You following what I'm saying?
I mean, that that's my big question is how the heck is somebody supposed to get in there and piecemeal this thing apart when half the roof is burnt out? You know, I'm in the construction industry. I mean, it doesn't seem safe to have anybody in there at all, really. I I don't, I mean, how are you gonna go about that? It seems like a catch twenty-two.
I think part of it, the building department ordered them to get a structural engineer to analyze the structure and submit the report to the building department along with plans for demolition, plans for renovation or that that decision's up to the chief building official to kind of drive that bus, unfortunately.
It doesn't sound that that there's gonna be any harm to pass this resolution. If anything, it's just a a backstop, for lack of a lack of a better word.
I I actually don't see any other way. I I think if we if we don't take a strong stance, I think that there's the great likelihood that either between the developer, the builder and the county building department will continue to stare at our shoes for another month or two and still not have the authority or the power to actually do anything about it. I'd rather have, yes, it may take thirty days, but at least that thirty days is on a time clock that leads us to action. As opposed to a time clock that leads us to another decision, that leads us to another moment at the at the building department, waiting for them to continue to shuffle papers and tell us thirty more days. So that said, I mean, I will second your motion.
Yeah, I agree with you. I do. And I just, I just, I guess I'm just like kind of wishing that there was more and a little disappointed in the county building department. I think it's okay for people to walk in and out of this thing and, you know, take rafters down. I mean, how the hell are you gonna dismantle the roof on that thing without, in a safe way? I mean, it really seems a little irresponsible to allow people to go in and piecemeal that thing apart as opposed to the county building department just coming in and saying, you know, this needs to come down. It's the only way to do it safely. I I'm disappointed. I understand as a township, there's not much we can do. And I'm just publicly, other than what we're doing. I mean, I think we're doing as much as we can, but a little disappointed.
I totally agree with you. I I I think that it's, you know. But we went through this with with On the Green, you know, where we got the runaround on a regular basis. And people were falling through decks. Um, but, you know, this is what we've come to be used to.
I I don't, and I don't want this to look like we're disparaging the developer, because I don't I don't think we are, you know. But we're just taking the action that we need to as a governing board to ensure that due process is followed. In the event that they fail, you know, to uphold their end of the deal, then then we're ready to move quickly. So, you know, in the event that, you know, the developer is watching or whatever, it's not that kind of a situation.
Well, this is perfectly workable. I mean, this is a, this is a process that's perfectly workable. You just have to, you know, get together with us. But but I want to have, as they say in in football, in in two minute, uh, two minute warning, I want the football in our hands, not in the county's hands, just simply for.
Well, for the record, I anticipate us back here in thirty days and able to do absolutely nothing because they did just enough to keep us off our back.
Well, but.
It's it's disappointing. I wish the county would have done a little a little more with it.
But that brings me to another question. They did an engineering study. Who's gonna review the engineering study?
Building department.
And will they take it to an engineer? Are they gonna just, is this gonna be a review of just, looks like it's got twelve pages. It's like it worked for me.
I'm I'm not sure. I can't answer that, to be honest with you.
Kind of concerns me too, because, you know, if the building department came out and took a look at it, but did they take a look at it from an emergency standpoint? Did they take a look at it from a real engineering standpoint? You know, that's the, these are the kinds of things that that trouble me. It goes into the black box over on Bauer Road, but we don't, you know, we don't know much more about it after that. So you you may be right, but if we're still sitting here in thirty days, I think we're gonna make a recommendation.
Yeah, I I again, I think this is about, this is all we can do as a township, and I'm happy to do it. And just wish we could do a little bit more and wish it was heading in a little more definitive direction, I guess.
And then maybe doing a little bit more, you know, we can keep the pressure on, you know, regular contact, you know, with the developer and say, look, we're watching you. And there is this resolution in place now, you know, you know, on a weekly basis, maybe, maybe more often. But that regular contact perhaps from fire, perhaps from Eddie or your designates and or the billing building department, if we can, you know, get some support there.
All right, so any other public comment?
So I do, I have a motion in a second.
Roll call?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Callan?
Yes.
Okay. Laura Adam?
This resolution is a little bit familiar. We did have a a resolution similarly passed last year. But this type of action is required to be done in the year of the actual sales that are involved. So I make a request a motion for a resolution declaring the intent to conduct an internet auction for the sale of unneeded obsolete or unfit personal property of Pierce Township and Batavia Township acquired from the village of Amelia.
So moved. As I recall, the last time we passed this, there were several addendum items that we requested, certain actions that we wanted to have taken, including allowing the public to have an opportunity to see the goods.
That will be in the contract with the auctioneer.
Okay.
And that is being drafted and reviewed with the law director.
And and we will then approve that contract at a later date?
It will be the conditions of prior to the sale, yes, because it's going to take some time because we also have to do legal advertisements.
Because, you know, when we passed it the last time, like I said, we we did, we we said we were going to do certain things. They seemed reasonable to me. And I want to make sure that we honor those those statements that we made a year ago or more.
I'll bring forward the contract for separate approval.
Okay, that's perfect.
This, this is a joint resolution is also approved by Batavia Township and they won't actually have their meeting until May the tenth.
Okay. Are we minus a second? Did I? I'll second it, just to make sure.
Second to second. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, Loretta, one more?
Yes, we will be having more conversations regarding our waste collection bid. But at this stage, you might have noticed the first version to the second version, this agenda moved from us by requesting an extension agreement for five years to a month-to-month extension agreement with Rumkey. They did not send me the documentation via an email today that I was supposed to receive. But this evening, I am requesting a motion to authorize a month-to-month extension agreement and addendum with Rumkey of Ohio in accordance with the existing terms and conditions of the Pierce Waste Collection Contract effective May the thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So this is contingent upon our levy passing before this contract would continue after the date of the levy fails. If we do in fact need to revisit the five-year extension until the levy is passed, we will need to consider that perhaps on one of these other agendas.
Okay, so I need a motion to enter into a month-to-month until we can get the levy on the ballot, correct? I have a motion.
Let me ask a quick question. This may be a dumb question. I apologize if it is. But what you said, consistent with the terms of the contract? And do those terms, the terms include at the current rates and so forth, or what? Is there any change in that?
Well, the, uh, that is, the actual rates will either be those new proposed rates or the other. That's yet to be clarified because I do not have that agreement yet. This only authorizes me. If it's unacceptable, it it won't be considered. We'll be working on the numbers for the levy following this. It can be revisited.
The hope would be, I I was thinking good faith, bridging the gap, of course. We have a potential another levy.
So should we then change, here we go again, changing motions?
I I really kind of needed room to negotiate prior to receiving this.
Yeah, it says your motion to authorize. Should we say motion to negotiate? Because you don't have, you don't have the final final here. And I'm just worried about.
Well, then we don't do anything tonight because really I can always negotiate. I just wanted to be ready in case anything kept us from having action ready prior to the expiration.
I would say we authorize the administrator to negotiate a month-to-month extension on the agreement. I think that would be more reflective of what we're actually doing, it sounds like. I don't see why not.
Right now, what, when, please remind me.
It actually expires the end of May.
And we've got, what, thirty-three meetings between now and then?
We could also say not to exceed a one percent increase or something. And then she could go ahead and do it if it's basically flat.
I think it's either the current.
That would probably be an incentive for Rumkey as well. They could just get it done.
Just tell me it's a current rate.
You kind of say that there in accordance with the existing, existing terms and conditions of the Pierce Waste Collection Contract?
That's what I wanted to understand. So that would keep the rates where they are?
I I need their confirmation, but that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And if they do not, then what?
Then no action.
Okay.
I won't take any action.
Should or should this motion not reflect that no action will be taken if it exceeds those boundaries? I mean, it it leaves you with a lot of wiggle room there.
Oh, in that case, we only need a not to exceed current rates on the end of it, right?
Yeah.
Was our law director, I think we should do here in terms of the verbiage.
I mean, I guess I would suggest you do the motion to enter into negotiations as we were saying, not to exceed, you know, the correct terms of the contract.
So we, in that scenario, we just change one word instead of authorize if we say negotiate.
So if you come back before the contract expires, you can accept the contract at your next meeting.
I'll still need action to sign in.
Yeah, so why don't we just change that one word from authorized to negotiate? You good with that, Mr. Jim?
Yes.
A friendly amendment.
We could, so I hate to overcomplicate this, but hey, you know, that's kind of what we do here. Bore the heck out everybody until they want to leave. What what about just doing authorize a month-to-month extension not to exceed and then she could do it? And it's not a negotiation. She could just move on it and be done as long as it doesn't go up. Could we just do that and leave the negotiate part out? So we could do that. And then that would allow you, Loretta, as long as it doesn't go up at all, to go ahead and get the deal done and put us on a month-to-month without coming back to the board.
I'm fine with that, too. If those, if those are the words, just let Deborah, Debbie know.
All right, so I, do I have a a motion as it states not to exceed current Rumkey rates?
So moved.
I think you made the motion. I'll second the motion. Well, if you didn't, you did. And I second it.
Do you want me to do it again? I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. I have a second. Roll call?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes. Yes.
I wanted to get out of that before I made a who's on first joke. All right. Consider candidates for appointment for Parks and Greenspace.
I had forwarded to you three individuals that had expressed interest in the Parks Committee appointment of the position will be vacated by Randy Page, unfortunately. At this stage, I'm not certain if you want to give a little more time. I did contact these three who had not actually sent their formal letters of interest and bios and asked for that. Only one of those three had replied so far. So we could either send another message out asking again for to remind people that there's this vacancy, see if there are any other candidates or give a little more time for these folks to respond to us.
I would, I would recommend that we just let this sit and allow those folks more time to get their paperwork in and because I'm not sure I'm prepared to. I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a decision on that tonight.
All right, table it and allow a little more time.
Mr. Page has to continue to serve until he's replaced.
He has to?
Has to.
So in other words, you will volunteer right now?
He's not here tonight because he's at the zoo volunteering.
Let's kick it on down the road. Just keep him there for another ten years.
All right, so next up, it looks like we have a motion to go into executive session. I'm going to go ahead and bump any more public comment, open floor discussion. Above that, does anybody else have any, any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if you have one, something very brief. This is, I wanted to kind of dovetail this, Loretta, into the the Rumkey situation. So I'm going to publicly apologize to my neighbors on Pond Run Road on behalf of Rumkey. Rumkey has not been collecting, did not collect this past week on my end of Pond Run because they, I think they were scared away by the road closed signs, although the road signs are pretty clear. They say close to has passed a certain point. So I think they're fairly intuitive, but, you know, I extend the apology anyway to everyone whose waste and recyclables were not collected, including mine. So perhaps, and I've actually put three calls in and an email. The recyclables are still at the driveway. So perhaps our kind administrator could put in a call and ask for them to be a little bit more attentive to the fact that that roadway is open.
I do know that Laura did follow up on some other citizen calls. I don't know if you called her directly.
No, no.
So people need to call Laura directly. She has absolutely a direct line and email to the drivers. So I'll have a follow-up.
Okay.
With you as well, but I know that others were sent back out to be collected.
If there's any concern about a turnaround, that was the concern that was expressed to me. The county engineer actually asked for my permission to have a turnaround on my property and I granted that permission. So there's adequate room to turn around at the end of the road. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Your public comment? All right, so.
You've got one.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Tim Rudd. I'm running for county auditor. I'm just here tonight to tell the board and the fiscal officer that I'm available. I'll be assessable. My interest tonight is simply to say, I'd like to hear from you guys at your leisure, what you think the current auditor's office is getting correct? Any concerns that you have with the current auditor's office? And anything that the auditor's office in the future could do to better serve the residents of Pierce Township? Thank you for your recognition and your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim.
You know, Tim actually just reminded me of something. Did you have your hand up? Zimmer Power Plant is getting ready to go out of business. That said, it's going to have a serious impact on New Richmond Schools, which is about roughly half of Pierce, covers half of Pierce Township. Sat in on several meetings recently discussing the financial impact that that's going to have on New Richmond Schools. The reason why Tim reminded me of that is because we were down in Washington Township and got a briefing from Vistra, the owner of the power plant. Just so y'all know, New Richmond is getting, New Richmond Schools is going to get hit with about a $2.5 million loss. That's not a loss in just tax revenue. That is a loss because the Vistra folks are taking the 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 valuation, tax valuation of the plant, they're taking it to Columbus to appeal the decision made by Claremont County. So when they take that to appeal, if they win, New Richmond Schools has to have to give them $2.5 million back. That's back. That's not even loss of revenue because the plant has shut down. That'll be another $3 million out of their budget every year. So that said, this is a very serious issue for us, not as, I mean, financially for us, not as much. But there is that ancillary black cloud over us because there's only, I mean, the schools will probably have to go out and do a levy. They've already mentioned that. And so it's a very serious situation. It's that's looming down in, down in Moscow right now. So wanted to let you, let you to know that and I almost forgot until Tim got up there and reminded me. So, but if you have any questions, guys, you know, any, any concerns? I've been sitting in on some of the meetings. I don't know everything, but I can point you to the right folks. That's all I have on that.
All right. Anything else? All right, so I would like to know if I have a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with O R C one-two-one-point-two-two-G two to consider the sale of property at competitive bidding or the sale or other disposition of unneeded obsolete or unfit for use property in accordance with section five oh five-point-one-oh of the revised code. If premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. That was definitely a run-on. We need some grammatical screening on some of this stuff.
For the O R C.
Do I have a motion for that? Because I'm not going to read it again.
I I will make the motion if you read it again.
Do I have, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
So we are out of executive to have a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And as discussed, no action will be taken. So barring no other public comment, so a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Great, where's that story?
Good.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.